Thank you, folks. Rarely we have a delay, but we had a delay today. And we appreciate your patience, but we need just a small, couple of things in order that we were able to get straight. Madam Clerk, call us in.
Councilmember Jimmy Clinton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Yeah.
Mayor Jason Larry.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We stand for our invocation and our prayers, please. Councilman, if you do us the honor.
Let us pray. Father, first, we'd like to thank you for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ, who we celebrate this month. We ask that his presence be ever with us tonight. We thank you for his guidance, his direction, the wisdom in his favor. We thank you, Lord, as we come together to end this year, that we will end it in joy and victory and the power of your Holy Spirit, as you've come throughout the year to bless us and guide us and direct us, that we might be a gift to the people of Stonecrest. Now, Father, I thank you for this meeting. Bless us, cover us, direct us in all of your ways, and we give you all the glory and praise for it. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Folks, we're at a point where I'm just gonna take an executive privilege for a pause because I want to introduce someone to you. It's just so proud of this person because I've known him for so many years, and I just have a great opportunity to introduce this new partner to the city of Stonecrest. And this is the new executive director from Arabia Mountain Heritage Area, who was formerly the Green Space Environment Manager for DeKalb County and also one of the interim directors at the Porter Sanford Center when we first opened some years ago. Now, she's currently also on the board of the Natural Conservancy, which is the Georgia chapter, and I want Ms. Revanda Cosby to come forward. I want people to see who she is. I want to shake her hand.
Thank you all so much for welcoming me to Stonecrest. I see our mayor is working.
He's coming around.
He's standing still.
Thank you, Ms. Revanda. I am so happy that we have you, Ms. Revanda. For those of you that don't know, you don't mind me sharing just a little history. We've known each other for, oh, man, maybe 12, 13, 14 years, along with Sheldon Fleming. We worked together and started and built the Porter Sanford Third Performing Arts Center, while Sheldon Fleming was actually inventing and running one of the land gardens. So Revanda is an incredible talent. I'm so glad that you're here, so glad that you're here. And relationships are everything. You never know, 10, 12, 15 years down the road, you know, who you're gonna be working with and what happens. And here she is, we got best in class right here in Stonecrest. Thank you, so glad to have you. All right. Counsel, we'll move to the approval of the council agenda. Are there any additional changes or deletions that you see? Seeing none, I'll take the actual motion for approval of council agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for December 9, 2019.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Agenda approved. Our minutes for the November 25, 2019, city council meeting. Counsel, I'll give you a moment to re-take a look at what we have here, make sure we're Anything, counsel? All right, seeing none, I will take an approval for the November 25.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval of the minutes from November 25, 2019.
All right. Properly moved and have a second.
Second.
All right, properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We have one more brief presentation while Mr. Chonner is setting up his technology Let me say this from the mic if I could, please. Let's bring up Councilwoman-elect Tammy Grimes. You knew this was coming. You knew this was coming.
Oh, here we go. I saw that. I can use these legs again. Every chance.
I heard y'all joking. All right. Mr. Chonner, are we ready for the next?
Yes, yes, we are.
All right. Let's do some, please.
All righty. We have Sylvia Smith and Audra Rojack from WSP. They're coming to give a presentation on the I-20 East Transit Oriented Development Community Plan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Larry and Council. Again, my name is Sylvia Smith. I'm with DeKalb County Planning and Sustainability, and this evening we're giving you an update on the I-20 East Transit Oriented Development Community Plan that we're working on. DeKalb County and MARTA received a grant from the Federal Transit Administration to develop a land use community plan prior to any type of transit. The grant was for $1.6 million with a $400,000 required match. MARTA contributed $200,000 to that match, and DeKalb County contributed $200,000 to that match as well. And here to discuss the community plan that we've been working on is our consultant Audrey Rojack, and she's with WSP.
Was that VSB, maybe?
WSP.
Oh, okay.
Nailed it. Nailed it.
Deal.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. I'm here on behalf of DeKalb County and MARTA, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about the I-20 East Transit Oriented Development Project. This is not the first time we've talked to Pless and to the mayor and to some of you about this project before. We actually kicked off, let me see if I can, there we go, we actually kicked this project off shortly before you became a city. So you are the very first, but not the last, of many complications along the road, but it's been a really exciting time for me to watch Stonecrest become what you are today and sort of go on that journey with you, and I'm excited to see what you do with some of the information we turn over to you when this is over. As you can see, this, this plan concerns the I-20 corridor, which actually includes part of I-285, basically from where the MARTA line terminates now at Indian Creek, down I-285, and then all the way out to where we are now at Mallett-Stonecrest. So this is a plan that we're doing in anticipation of a transit improvement or a transit investment. We have specified only that it's high capacity, not that it is any one mode. We, we're trying to stay as far away from that question as we can, but the idea for us is just to help make this place and all the places on the way out here as supportive of transit as possible. The reason we're doing that isn't just because we think it's a good idea, although, of course, it is, but also because the FTA, to get money from the FTA, it's not like federal highways. It doesn't just flow up and then flow back down. You have to compete on a project-by-project basis for FTA funding for transit improvements. So because of that, they have, we know their criteria. We know that includes certain densities. You have to have certain destinations. You need to have a certain number of, a certain number of jobs in an area to be really considered valuable for one of these very competitive grants. So the I-20 corridor, as you're aware, has had some issues getting that funding. We haven't gotten it yet, so how do we get there? So FTA actually has an answer for that, which is a grant which helps you develop destinations for deployment and some density along a corridor that's looking for transit, so that you can be not only better supportive of transit when you get there, but that you can actually score better in their rubric down the road, so that when it comes time to get a grant, you're more eligible. So in essence, the FTA gave us money so that later the FTA can give us more money. Thank you, federal government. So what are we doing? Well, we're not buying land. We're not, and like I said before, we're not choosing a transit improvement. We're not, the station areas that we're looking at are what we think are logical locations for stations on the way out this direction, but this does not mean that this is binding, so we're not choosing anything. We are not a transit study. However, we are looking for policies and some incentives that you can use to help bring private investment to these clusters along the corridor to help improve the transit supportiveness of the corridor and eventually help get the investment that we want. And of course, by not being a transit study, we're also trying to stay as flexible as possible, so that whatever does end up coming out here works with the strategies that we've So instead of looking like a train line or station development, it really looks like land uses. It's about private development, economic development, and land uses. Like I said, we kicked off about three years ago, and right after we kicked off, Stonecrest became a city. Over the time that we have been an active project, we've also had a certain delay because of the DeKalb County Transit Master Plan. We've sort of held off so that we wouldn't be in the way of their messaging for about a year. So we sort of went dormant last year, but we have, we did a lot, as you can see, with stakeholder interviews, not just with MARTA and DeKalb County, but with also with some people who own land and work in Stonecrest. And thank you very much to Stonecrest for helping facilitate that and make sure that when we do have ideas about what should happen at these areas, that it's actually something that the people here would want and that the people who own the land would be interested in going forward with. So along the way, we had lots of meetings. We had a public kickoff where we just said, okay, you just come up and tell us what you want. This is what's there. Where do you live? Where do you work? What are things like for you now and what do you want? We heard, we want a mix of uses. We'd actually like it, be able to get out of our cars and walk around and, you know, pick up dry cleaning on the way back from getting transit to the city. We'd really like to have jobs and better jobs in the corridor, office jobs, jobs that we could actually feed families with. That's what we want. And we also want higher level development. Now, you guys out here are sort of, you're sort of a rare case in this corridor because you have restaurants and sit-down restaurants and some things to do in the evenings, but that is not true for a lot of DeKalb outside of this area. That's something we heard about them, too. And then we had the Public Design Workshop, which was actually held in Stonecrest off the Nola Drive. It was probably our, not just the best meeting we had for this project, but one of the best ones I've ever been to. We employed about eight different urban designers just to sit down and help sketch out plans for stations with the people in attendance. So in real time, you could, we could talk about density and uses and who might live there, what kind of work might be available there. And from that, oops, all excited, we came up with our community area, station area visions, which means that we have, in this plan, which you can see is a lot bigger than what I'm showing you tonight, but I can leave it and you can use it and you can see it. If you have comments, just make sure we have them by next week, because we'll be sending this over to DeKalb County for adoption. But in brief, we have a vision and some rules for implementation for each of these stations. Now, three of these are in your city. We're not going to be able to go through all of those tonight. I know that there's a lot still on the agenda, but in general, for example, for the mall at Stonecrest, we'd like to take what's now a mall and still a working mall, but imagine the area around it as more of a regional attraction and add some density and get some live-work-play district going here. You guys have a very, you have got one of the success stories in this corridor, and you can build upon that. I think you're one of the catalytic stations. It's this and Indian Creek, we think, have the best chance of getting more development. Indian Creek, because it already has transit, and here, because you have the land, you have the parcels, and you have some success to build on. But then to get there, we also have strategies. In this case, we involved, this is sort of describes what we want to see, which is like reduction of parking that would be necessary to get to where we want to go at this station. But also, we would need to, where's that? Make some zoning changes to get specifically where this goes. Those are things that if you want to act on them, you will act on them as a city after this plan, to basically, this should help, to help guide your choices in choosing zoning if anybody wants rezoning in these areas in the near future. But this plan doesn't change anything because you're a city and you're safe. You're safe from it. And then finally, I think this is really important in line with what we're seeing with the Belt Line and what's happening in interior Atlanta. A lot of our recommendations are really focused on being equitable. There's a lot of fear of gentrification and of people being pushed out and of people losing. Oh, he's taking my stuff. Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right, I can wrap up. But we, it's no good to help bring transit to people if you move the people out who want the transit and replace them with people who can afford all the cars they want. That doesn't help people who serve with transit. It doesn't help people who want transit, and it doesn't help the fabric of a neighborhood. So in, in general, what we really want to see is the minimum of displacements. We want to see the people who enjoy a better, a better South DeKalb be the people who live there now. So any questions?
Counsel, floor is over.
I have a question on the land use and zoning recommendations.
Yes, ma'am.
By chance, were these recommendations compared to what we have in our comp plan today?
They should be, I don't, I would have to go double-check to make sure they're on the most recent comp plan, but we did work in tandem with the collaborative firm when you had the comp plan revitalized a couple of years ago.
Okay. You said a few years ago? So that was the DeKalb comp plan?
Couple of years ago. It was like two years ago. Is it one?
Yeah, we just did.
Oh, okay.
Couple of months ago.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Right. Well, that was the one that was, we referenced-ish here?
Yeah, I'll make sure that's true, but that should be correct.
So you guys working also with our transit plan?
Excuse me?
Oh, well, we're working on the transit, master transit plan as well, and that's been done through the collaborative as well.
Working on transportation plan.
Transportation plan, that includes transit.
There's a lot of them out there. They overlap after a while.
So are you guys working with that as well?
We were.
With that group?
We worked with BHB on the DeKalb County Transit Master Plan. And I know that the county's coming out with a overarching plan that will include transportation and transit and also comprehensive planning. So that might be us in the future. I don't know about anything else.
So on the map that you showed us with the mall?
Mm-hmm.
The one image with the mall, you have a little blue area that is marked off, and it says that that is the Stonecrest Station?
Yes.
Is that property, I'm assuming, is, I know you said earlier that this is not about buying properties?
Yeah.
Or acquiring land, but I've seen that, that same spot marked off in a couple of other presentations?
Yeah.
Is that property already acquired by MARTA or is it just being planned?
No, sir, it's just sort of the target that they've set for a reasonable location.
Reasonable, okay, so that's what I was getting to. Logistically, that would be the best place in Stonecrest, you guys think?
Right, but they haven't bought any land because of so many, so many other things are still moving that they haven't, and that site could still move, so no, they haven't secured the land.
Thank you so much.
Of course, thank you.
What's the next step after you submit this to DeKalb County?
They'll adopt it, and then we will go to ARC to get the LCIs, I think, Livable Communities, Livable Centers Initiative. We will ask that the stations be grandfathered into the process of LCI, so that they are actually going to be eligible for LCI funding for improvements like sidewalks and other small transportation improvements. So that's something that I would recommend we would follow up with you on the other side of this, or just a way for pursue more money for amenities.
As Audrey said, we're having a final meeting tomorrow night, and that meeting is at the Maloof Auditorium, and it's from 5:00 to 7:30.
4:30 to 6:30.
Oh, sorry, 4:00 to 6:30. And also, I would encourage you to go on to our DeKalb County Planning and Sustainability website or our website, is it on, is it on here? Or our website, the I-20 East TOD Plan website, because we have the full document of everything, including the Stonecrest areas, area stations there, and we would like you to look at that and read that and provide any input.
Is that inclusive in that package that she has right there?
No, this is a, this package is a...
Yes, we can make a copy of it.
Is that it?
This is it? So what? Okay, good. Let me just ask you, just in conjunction with the ATL, the regional transit work that's going on?
No, not yet, no.
Also that...
No, it's, it doesn't overlap. It's because the decisions the ATL makes might change what the actual transit investment is, but won't change the land use. And most, and some of the strategies that we have in this are like about bringing developers to a location and how to use incentives. So that's what we talked about, I think, last time we were together, and those would be applicable wherever you decided to have your investment.
Okay.
Well, thank you again. I appreciate it. Thank you, Pless.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we'll go into public comments.
Good morning, every, good evening, everyone. It's my morning, but it's your evening. I came specifically to congratulate Ms. Grimes on her election and to tell her that I hope she will continue to represent the people of District 5 with the same integrity, dignity, and purpose that she has done as a private citizen. I have a lot of faith in her and her ability to express the needs of District 5. That's not to say anything negative about the other candidate in the race, but it is to say that I know her very, very well, and I, I'm hoping that she will be very effective. I find it very troubling that you guys are just now realizing what you could and could not spend splash money on. I think those questions had come up on various websites about how that money could be funded and used, but at least you are now doing the right thing to make sure that the splash money is applied as it should be applied. With regard to the MARTA presentation that was just made, I want you to remember this. When the Olympics decided to come to Atlanta, one of the things was to build the North Station, North Spring Stations. It took them less than four years to build the North Spring Station, and that was in 1996 that the Olympics were here. So we were not as technologically advanced as we are now. As many of you know, I do travel, and I travel nationally and internationally, so I would say that if you want to see how quickly transportation can be done, some of the places you can look at is Los Angeles and what Los Angeles has been able to do in less than three years with their rapid transit and their trail, their systems of going where it goes, and it does meet the needs of everybody else. And countries as remote as Ethiopia, Tanzania, South Africa, Kenya, and a couple of other countries all have high-speed public transportation. I've had the opportunity to ride some of it. When I was in Rhonda, I was, I was amazed at how well they have set up a transportation system of buses. I know a lot of people don't want to look outside the U.S., but I say sometimes we have to look where there is things being done that will meet our needs and can possibly be adapted to what goes on here in Stonecrest and to make Stonecrest a better place. One of the things I will say very quickly about Rhonda is that they have a street lighting program, which is much needed in Stonecrest. And Rhonda, the streets are well-lit. You can walk down them anytime, day or night, and feel safe. Their telephone poles, I think it's every thousand feet or so, have a button that you can push to summon the police, and they do come. So I do hope that you will take this time and look to Los Angeles, Seattle, and the countries that I've mentioned and see how they're moving, and even Minneapolis, because I've seen their system, and see how these systems are working and how they are moving people back and forth. I would love if I could get on a train here at Stonecrest, take an Uber to Stonecrest, get on a train, and go to the airport. But now, as it stands, if I want to park, I have to go over to Kensington, catch the train there, and then go to the airport. So please consider these things, and again, I'm very happy that Mrs. Grimes is going to be here, and I will tell you, she has integrity and purpose.
Mr. Barney Knight.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I had not intended to speak tonight, but I, I was not aware that there was going to be a presentation about the I-20 East TOD proposal. I'm, so my thoughts about this may be a little bit scattered. I will say that I am deeply concerned about it, at least insofar as it pertains to the Lithonia Industrial Boulevard interchange. I'll let Mr. Bill Allen take a look at what they propose for the Stonecrest Mall area. I don't know that they've made any attempt to really coordinate with him, but I would point out that it appears that this plan is not coordinated with our new comp plan update. It's not coordinated with the revisions to the Stonecrest overlay, which the council just adopted last month, and I can tell you that there's been zero attempt to coordinate with the major landowners. Now, I get it that MARTA is not in the business at the present time of acquiring land or negotiating to acquire land, but that isn't the same thing as at least reaching out to the major landowners and getting their input about what they think should be going in a particular area and about their willingness to talk about, well, let's work together on this. I can tell you that the two major landowners in the area of the Lithonia Industrial Boulevard Interchange are New Birth and the Stewart family. I represent the Stewart family. MARTA has never talked with the Stewart family about TOD. Stewart family wants to talk with them about it. It has not happened thus far. Now, this would be of great concern to me if this were simply a proposal which MARTA were floating at this point. And if they want to get funding, that's fine, but when I heard tonight that they intend to take this and get the county's approval and then go to ARC and have it as the basis of an LCI plan, I have big problems like that on behalf of the Stewarts. They... They need to talk with us. They need to find out, for instance, that the properties on the north side of I twenty are industrial. And everything that you see in their plan, their concept plan proposed for north of I twenty, I don't think is going to fly. As far as south of I twenty, again, they need to be coordinating with the city staff. They need to be coordinating with the plans that my clients have and talking with us. Communication is where it's at. And I'm hoping that, I've got Ms. Smith's card, I'm hoping that we can arrange a meeting with her to perhaps make a few changes to this. We'll see. Thank you.
There are no more public comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, we'll move into new business. First is the creation of the Urban Redevelopment Agency. The City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that you have in front of you now the two resolutions. One is to pre-regulate the exercise of the powers under the urban redevelopment law and the second is the resolution activating the URA. And these are prepared specifically for you this evening. And I think if you have questions about them, you can certainly ask me now. I'm open to questions, but these are obviously resolutions, no first, second. We can adopt these this evening. And as I indicated previously, we're not obligated, once we've activated the URA, it's simply the first step to financing these buildings. Ed Walls here this evening, Ed will speak with you this evening, if it's the pleasure of the council, to discuss finance with regard to this real estate in executive session. And so that might be an appropriate time to ask certain specific questions about the financing piece for the property. But these resolutions are fairly straightforward and I'm certainly open to answering any questions from the council.
All right, Counsel, floor is open.
You present Mr. Ed Walls as the expert?
Not on these two resolutions, but Ed probably knows them as well as I know them. But he can certainly, Ed can answer any question. I'm happy to answer questions. You might twist Ed's arm and he might talk to you too.
Now, I was trying to get a feel where these are implemented right now in the local area. I know that Avondale has one in place and I know you said all cities are qualified and...
Yeah, the, the, the General Assembly creates an urban redevelopment agency in every city in the state of Georgia and you just have to activate it.
Oh, and in terms of the ones activated?
Yes.
What's been the experience with some of those? Because it was kind of new to me until I read this over the weekend.
So a lot of cities have authorities that were created by the Georgia Legislature. So Decatur created a public facilities authority instead of a URA by the, by the old Children's Methodist Home. Brookhaven created a public facilities authority to do their Peak Street Greenway thing and to do a public safety building. They could have done a URA, they go to the legislature. Dunwoody went to the legislature and got a public facilities authority. A URA requires you to jump through some more hoops to declare an urban redevelopment area and to declare an area that's blighted. And so an authority that's created by the legislature has a territory already, the whole city limits of the city, and it doesn't require you to adopt an urban redevelopment plan and doesn't require you to do as many hoops. And so a lot of cities, like the city of South Fulton, city of Forest Park, city of Jonesboro, they just created a URA because you all, the mayor and council, can do it and not go to the legislature and ask them. The URA can do the same thing as these other public facilities authority. DeKalb has a URA. They created it in two thousand and ten to take advantage of some federal money to do projects, so they didn't go to the legislature at the time to create one. Fulton County has a Fulton County Public Building Authority. Atlanta has a URA and they, they collapsed it with their development authority to make it Best Atlanta. So it's a, it's a tool that's used by a lot of folks. Some folks use it by a different name with an authority created by the legislature.
So they're all around us and we can visit them and evaluate how well it's working or not working.
Yes, sir. So what, what the URA does is, it's a conduit. It will not meet, it won't have any money, it won't do projects. It issues a revenue bonds on your behalf and names you as its agent to carry out all the, the stuff that you want to do. So in these two particular projects that you're talking about, the URA will meet, they'll approve the issuance of the bonds, and then they don't have to meet again until you have another project. They'll name you as their agent to carry it out.
Okay. So what responsibilities will we have as a city with this URA?
What? Say it to me again, boss.
What responsibilities will we have?
So any debt that the URA issues, you have to pay. And so you will adopt an intergovernmental contract between you and the URA in which you pledge to pay the debt every six months when it comes due until maturity. So they act as a conduit. You know how business people create an LLC and they use that LLC to go borrow stuff? Your URA is your LLC and, but you, you're, you're back in all the debt of that LLC.
What's the difference in an urban redevelopment agency and an urban redevelopment authority?
So an urban redevelopment agency was created for every city in the state, just like Winston talked about, by general law, general legislation. A city, I only, I only know of two. Albany has one and Atlanta has one. Atlanta, Atlanta's called IRFA, I think it's called. But the legislature creates an urban redevelopment authority, making it an authority. But this omnibus law that the state legislature, so that every city, so every city in the state can create a housing authority, every city in the state can create a development authority, every city in the state can create a hospital authority, and every city in the state can create a solid waste management authority for landfills, every city in the state can create a jail authority, every city in the state can create this URA. And it's just called Urban Redevelopment Agency.
That has no bearing on credit rating or...
The URA, even though it's called agency, is a political subdivision under the state of Georgia, the same as you. But where the legislature creates you, you create the URA.
And that gives us more, more flexibility on our part, more whatever's going to happen with regards to property, how we see it, what we want to do, how it's purchased, that particular thing.
Right.
Okay. I'll go back to Councilman George Turner's question. So what we're doing today is activating the, the resolution and the, to authorize. We're not taking any specific action on any property or anything.
Yes, sir.
But we do, but we do need to, we do need to activate it.
You do need to activate it and you need to think about the members.
All right.
At least in our discussion and our, in the work session.
And the way the members work, you make a recommendation and mayor and council confirms.
Yeah, the members are sitting up here. Good stuff.
And so in Brookhaven, they appointed themselves as members of their public facilities authority. So you could, if you want, appoint yourselves as the members of the URA. And they meet as mayor and council adjourn and then recreate as members of the URA.
All right. We'll, we'll start with this first. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Wall, folks? All right. Good deal. The Mr. City Attorney and Counsel, I make the motion that we create of the Urban Redevelopment Agency. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Properly moved in second. Any further conversation?
Mr. Mayor, I think it might be appropriate to adopt the resolution separately. You're going to take them one at a time?
Sure.
Okay.
So we'll do the creation and then we'll do the resolution?
It would be the resolution of necessity. That one should be first, then the second, then the next actually be the activating resolution.
The first one, the necessity to exercise the powers under the law. And then the second resolution is to actually exercise those powers to activate the URA.
All right, I'm going to withdraw my original motion. And for a substitute motion is to create the resolution of necessity prerequisite to exercise the power on an urban redevelopment law. All right, now I'll take a second.
Second.
All right, properly moved in second. Any conversation? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, resolution created. The second is move for an activating resolution to authorize the urban redevelopment agency of the city of Stonecrest to transact business and exercise powers under the provision of the urban redevelopment law. To determine the number of terms of office of the board of commissioners of the urban redevelopment agency to repeal conflicting resolutions to provide for effective date and for other purposes. All right, I'll properly move there, second.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Having seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Activate it. Thank you, Counsel. All right. All right, number three on the new business, twenty twenty, council meeting calendar. Counsel, I think if I recall correctly, we were going to...
Changes.
Two changes, actually. So from February fifth to the tenth and from December twenty-eighth to December twenty-first. All right. I'll take a motion for the council meeting calendar for twenty twenty.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt the twenty twenty council meeting calendar with the said changes.
All right.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Calendar passes. Our Housing Authority Resolution? All right, I'll take a motion to approve our Housing Authority Resolution.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve our Housing Authority Resolution.
All right, properly moved. I'll second. Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think just for clarity, the reason for this is to clean up some vacancies and fill those spots for the rest of this year.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm clear.
All right, good deal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Housing Authority Resolution passes. All right. L-MIG Resolution? Mr. Deputy?
Once again, I just propose that this year's identified fiscal year twenty twenty L-MIG project, total of five point six nine lane miles of roads on nineteen streets, will be resurfaced in the, at the total cost of one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, which will, which will require a sploshed fund match of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars to go along with the five hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-two cents that we'll be receiving from the state of Georgia for L-MIG.
Mr. Deputy, what was that number again? One million?
Uh, yes. A total of one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Counsel, any questions?
Not necessarily a question, just a couple of comments.
All right.
We identified some streets that are on here that we're going to pave. And I know it's not a part of this, but when might the paving actually begin?
Uh, we'll, we'll have to wait until the paving season begins in twenty twenty. And so it'll, it'll be late March, early April when we'll go to bid.
Okay.
Depends on how the weather breaks, is that it? Okay. Did I call for the motion or that was in comments?
That's a, that's a comment, sir. But why we own that and I'm not sure where we need to include this about bonding money that we're going to still pursue, pursue?
Uh, yeah, a, a, actually, that, yeah, that, that's, that's outside of...
You can take that someplace else.
Yeah, so this is just for the, for the L-MIG paving.
Gotcha, okay.
That we'll be doing.
I just don't want that to escape us.
Okay.
Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Need a motion.
All right, I'll ask that. No worries. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer a motion that we adopt and approve the FY twenty twenty L-MIG.
All right. Properly moved.
Second.
And second. All right, we've had a discussion. Now, here we go. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? All right. Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate that. Uh, let's see, FY twenty twenty budget? Let's see. Uh, Councilwoman, if you would please, uh, update us on under council, city council under five-two-three-five-zero.
So we adjusted the council travel line. Well, we didn't adjust it, we funded the travel line so that the council had adequate amount of funds to travel. So we included ten thousand in that line across the five council members, which would be two thousand dollars apiece for the fiscal year to travel. We had already recommended to fund the education and training line for the council, separate from the education and training line from the office of the mayor. So you'll see ten thousand there, which again is the same two thousand dollars across the five members to participate in education and training. Those were, that was the discrepancies we were discussing in work session and we have made, so throughout the entire thing, we have made the adjustments all the way down so that the budget balances out. You want me to go through the rest of the lines or that we made changes to?
Uh, yes, ma'am, if you don't mind.
The Economic Development Department film permitting line, there was an error where it read a hundred thousand, so we made that change to twenty thousand. We had already accounted for the hundred thousand dollars in the attorney fee line. So that was just a mathematical error, just didn't balance. So we, we adjusted the twenty thousand dollars was already credited to, a hundred, a hundred thousand was already credited to the attorney line. And at the very end, because we made those adjustments, we also adjusted the contingency fund just to reflect the entire thing balancing. It now balances.
All right. Counsel, any other questions or comments?
Uh, in reference to, I just want to, excuse me, we can do this at another point in time, but for the thirty-four-one-twenty under economic development film permitting, that is really not film permitting, that's a misnomer.
Okay, where's that, Counsel? Shall we, shall we? Oh, thirty-four-one-twenty?
Thirty-four-one-twenty, it's not for film permitting.
Okay, um, what would you like for that to say?
Film development.
Oh, instead of, oh, I got you.
We're changing that because it's not for film permitting.
We, we, we'll take care of that. What would be the, the proper word?
Development.
Development?
Yeah, film, let's say film development.
This permitting is actually a revenue, not an expenditure.
Uh, that's true, that's true.
So we're going to need to change the verbiage here.
Uh, development?
Mm-hmm. That's fine.
Uh, but you want the number to stay the same, though?
Yes.
Okay, good deal, good deal. Counsel McClanahan? Counselman George Turner? Good deal. All right, I'll take a motion for the adoption and approval of the twenty twenty budget.
And accompanying resolution.
And accompany resolution. And accompany resolution.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the 2020 budget and the accompanying resolution.
Second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Budget passes. Thank you, counsel, I appreciate that. 2020 CH2M contract? Ms. City Auditor?
Before you is the 2020 amendment to the CH2M contract. We've had our discussions with both representatives of the company and with the city council. This contract calls for an increase of the annual rate to 5.1, $5,140,730, which is an increase of about 4% above last year's amount, which represents, according to CH, according to Jacobs, an increase of 3% for cost of living as well as increases to other costs of services.
All right. Flows open for counsel.
Want me to dive in first? Or last?
It's all you.
Okay. First, I want to address something you just said. You mentioned a 3%, actually, I don't know if you're the appropriate person, we should be addressing this too. But you can say because I'm going to have to ask you something, that's a Jacobs question, actually. But anyway, I heard you mention 3%, which is different than the 2% that we were told the last time we were here. So was that a number mentioned recently?
That was something that I was corrected on today, we were talking about 2%, but in discussions today, my understanding is that it's
Mr. Wright?
You the mayor and counsel?
All right.
The average raise for our staff is 3%. If we said 2% at the last meeting, I spoke an error if I said that.
I thought I heard 3%. Were we talking about something different? I apologize.
I said I didn't know exactly what it was, but I don't remember.
I wrote it down.
On what?
You said two.
I said two.
No, Wayne said two.
No, I apologize if I made a mistake.
It's 2%, well, what you mentioned was you gave 2% last year, so you intended to give the same 2% this year. But, I mean, we don't have to go down the tape road, but
We've done the raises already, they go into effect December 21st, and the average raise was 3%, we had 3% of salaries to Divya. That's how we did it.
Okay, so the other question I had, I just heard a difference in the number from last meeting and this meeting, so I was asking about that. But the question I still have is the we now know the cost of living increase percentage is 3%. In the amendment, in Amendment 2, scope of work services, and now Amendment 3, there is no change to the scope of services being provided. So the additional increase, which I think we roughly said was 4%, a little bit higher than that, between the 4.9 million base from Amendment Number 2, and then Amendment Number 3 proposed 5.1 million, was roughly about 4%, a little higher than that. So if the scope of services is not changing from Amendment 2 to Amendment 3, what is the increase in the cost? So, and I get it that 4%, we're taking 3 for cost of living, so that leaves 1.7-ish percent increase. If the scope of services aren't changing, what is the rationale for the additional cost?
So we added a number of positions this year, and the we're basically incorporating them into the base fee ongoing. We were able to afford them because we had some vacancies, and we've done some realignment of duties and that sort of thing, and so it's a very small increase to enable us to add these positions. So that's the seven FTEs that we were talking about the last council meeting. That's the difference between what we planned at the beginning of 2019 and what we have at this point.
Right, and so I thought that we had this discussion with our internal auditor and some separate council members. The discussion led down the path of this is a contract for services, and the amount of personnel provided to carry out those services is not necessarily taken into consideration on the one-to-one scale. It's code enforcement, economic development, community development, so on and so forth, it's the services to be provided.
Right.
And whatever amount of personnel is required to provide those services is a part of the process in the lump sum format. So I guess I just have a little difficulty in the explanation of the increase leading back to personnel, which we have been guided in the direction of personnel should not be taken into consideration on a one-to-one scale because it's a lump sum for service contract. So it provides a slight bit of confusion when we say we're going to stay on the path of contract for services. The amount of personnel to provide those services is not a one-to-one scale, but then when we ask for rationale for the difference in cost, you take it down to the one-to-one scale. It provides some confusion, either we're going on the contract for services, it costs this amount, contract for services, the services are not changing, or we're basing it on the FTE. A little difficult and confusing for me to cross the two when we're discussing what is the increase in services when the exact same services are being provided this year that were provided last year.
I understand, and I, what I'm hearing you say is it feels like we're saying, you know, we have a number of FTEs that you've got to pay for, but no, wait a second, we're lump sum contract, so we just have to accomplish the scope. And there's validity to both sides of that. The reality is, we create a budget just like anybody else, and it's got to be based on the people we expect to provide the service and then the other costs that go along with that. And the scope could be amended every time we make a change. I think one of the questions that came up this week, I think you may have mentioned scope, and I got to looking at it, we could have added scope for court because the current contract says we'll do an environmental court, and we've actually done more offenses, so there's a larger scope there, and we did add a position to do that. But, you know, when I was looking at it before, it didn't seem like it was important to change. But the reality is, we are doing different things and more things, and we've added some admin staff. Rearranged some of the finance staff, and so, you know, we're trying to accommodate the growth and the needs of the city within the, you know, within a fairly tight constraint. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but the, I guess the proposal that we've got on the table is what it will take to fund the staff that we have in place. And if the staff we have in place is more than the council wants, we can reduce that.
No, I don't think that's what we're saying. It's just as we're evaluating, and we've kind of asked these questions before, and so we either get the answer of no, stay on the cost for services side, not the personnel side, but then you actually still keep going down the personnel side, and then we ask questions about the personnel, go back to, well, it's a lump sum contract for services. So when we're trying to evaluate, making sure that if you go down the personnel route, and we try to check off a one-for-one, most of the positions that were brought, first of all, all the positions that were brought on were brought on in the 2019 budget. So as we tried to go down the list and literally check off when these positions came into the city, obviously, they're all here today, minus the ones that are vacant, but they were written into the contract amendments prior to this third one. So the vacancies that exist today, those positions were already written into prior amendments, which were funded because people were sitting on those positions. So they were funded in a prior budget.
Right.
So what we had a difficulty identifying, and then that takes us back down to the lump sum contract with the with the cost for services, is trying to make it a one-to-one was very difficult. But in that attempt, it was hard for us to find where there were seven positions that were not already provided for and funded in the 2019 or prior years, but now needing to be funded in the 2020. So make that a little less complicated. Everybody was here in 19. It's on that list of 38, all those positions were here at some point in 19.
Yes.
Which means we were already paying them.
Yes.
Right. Out of the same number, out of the same 4.9 base that we had approved. So if that's not shifting in 2020, but the base is, what we're asking for is what is that number? But then we go down the road of, well, it's not actually that number because you're a lump sum contract for services. So we're not going to go down that road. So that's, I'm just trying to point out the complexity in these different explanations.
I understand, and we were able to add staff who weren't budgeted during this contract year and afford it basically because we had some vacancies in some key positions and had some salary savings there. And we realized we needed staff to do these various things, we needed to add parks and rec customer service staff and others, and so we were able to do that.
Right, and because of the vacancies
Right.
of the positions that were already funded.
Correct.
Right, so it almost that's a wash in a sense.
Well, it has been for this year.
Right.
But to continue the added positions plus fill the vacant positions, that's where a bit of the increase is coming from.
Yeah, that's what was difficult for us to identify. So anyway, that's just that's where my resistance still settles. Just trying to understand, even when I use the formula that's in your contract, what you saw in my email from, I guess today, in the wee hours, we took your 75% of your, well, the ECI, you use 75% of your total base. So we multiplied that by then 2%, but I guess we can move it to 3%. And 3% is still obviously less than the entire 4% increase that we're putting across the entire base. So if we're saying that 3% is for cost of living increases, then I would charge that 3% to the 75% formula in your contract, which would still leave that 1-ish, 1.4% as just an increase to carry on business that in my mind, in my calculations, we were already doing in 19, and nothing is changing in 20.
Well, what will change in 20 is we will fill the procurement position, we will hire a planner too, remember what else is vacant, maybe those
Your team manager, right, is the third one. And so to my point, those were already funded.
They were funded.
In 19. So are we, so in a sense, we're refunding what was already funded. And I understand that we swapped, and we added some roles, and so that was a wash.
Right.
So if it's a wash, why are we now paying for it in 2020?
We funded it at this level, and we've added it, added positions, people to this level, but because we had vacancies, they're basically the same. But if you want to fill these vacancies, we'll be here, because that is the level that we're where we are with people and staffing. Does that make sense?
Sir, but that's
Excuse me, whoever that is, I don't need any comments from the audience. Conversation between counsel and our contractor. Proceed, sir.
Ms. Cobble, we we added, because we started having court, we added a position. We shifted an existing staff person to run the court. We hired a business license tech to replace her, so that in effect was an additional position, was not in the budget. We needed, as we were taking on the parks, we needed additional customer service positions, and because we had savings, we were able to do that without coming back to the city and saying, hey, we got to have more money. We got to increase the scope in order to do this. We didn't need to do that because we had some, you know, we had a transition in redevelopment director and accounting manager, and so we've had some opportunities for some savings, and so we've invested those savings in additional staff. And so if we keep those staff, those staff people, and I hire those positions that are vacant, I won't have the savings from the vacant positions to pay the new people. So it's got to come out of a small increase in the contract. Or I guess we could reduce the staff again. Does that make sense?
Ish. But see, that's why this is complicated, because then we go back to, well, it's a lump sum contract. Right, so whatever we need to do to provide this service, we're going to do it because it's a lump sum contract, it doesn't matter about the number of personnel, whatever it takes to get the job done. But then we explain the increase is based on personnel. And even when we did the one-to-one, some of the positions that we're bringing on were not a full FTE. So when I take the half of FTEs, and I think that equaled two full FTEs, and compare that to the positions that are vacant, that were not a wash in the ones that we brought on, I still didn't find your number. So, and that's just me, and maybe I've made it more complicated for some folks than others, but it still was just about a wash, if not a point, maybe a half a FTE or so different. Not a full three FTEs for sure.
If I can, while you reload?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My concern was the base. In the Amendment Number 3, the base is given as $5,140,000. Whereas you look at the end of FY 19, that number would have been 4,923, and based on the way it's had been done in the past, that would have been brought forth as the base. And the 5.1 would have been the total for Amendment Number 3, and the difference in that is $217,000. And you explained most of that with the cost of living increase, and that's just the wee tad left over after the cost of living, and that was the only thing that I was looking for and explanation as to what it was for, and you've gone through a lot of that. But that was the thing that's going to be important in the future, and I think we need to make that correction probably here and now, and that is that the written document should not show the 5 million as the base because it is not, if you follow the same path that you followed in the past.
Mr. Turner, you're correct, except for one thing, the reason, the term base contract, and then they use the term additional scope is used is because if you look at Amendment 2, we did add scope, and we added to what we were required to accomplish in 2019. And so that's why it was designated as additional scope, and so you had the base scope, which was what we did last year. Then this is the additional scope that's in the amendment, that's provided in the amendment now, and as I recall, we added parks and, it was some parks and rec staff and
Yeah, that is all explained step by step by step, and it's clear.
That's why they separated those prices out.
Right.
It was for the pricing for the scope that was being added by that specific amendment. We didn't propose a scope addition in this amendment because we're generally doing the same things we've been doing.
But then, in that case, I would still want to see the base as one number, and if there's no addition, then the bottom base would be the same as the top base because it would be zero added, which was zero positions added, but you did do the cost of living adjustment, and that went in there, plus a little something else that you were explaining, and I got some of it.
Right.
That's right. Again, I'm just one person that's here as I see it the way it goes. And this is for counsel. And this is for council also, and I can appreciate everybody's point of view. And I'm not speaking for Mr. Wright. But there is some level of margin in business for miscellaneous that we hadn't accounted for. And if that difference is the difference between three, excuse me, it was four point seven? Four point seven?
Four point four percent.
I'm sorry, which one?
Percentage, it's four point four. It's four point four percent.
Four point four percent. All right, so three point, three point oh percent of that, that's, that's for cost of living raise. So that leaves a, a, a margin difference of one point four. And Councilman George Turner, two hundred and seventeen thousand? Okay, roughly that or so. On, on five point one million, I'm okay with that kind of margin difference. Because having worked with CH two M and Jacobs, I've seen it go higher than that for some of the needs that we have to have here at City Hall. And I can completely appreciate where Councilwoman Kabbal and, and Councilman George Turner is coming from. But I also have to have a human factor with regards to what type of margin of difference that we may have to have for any year, whether it's twenty twenty or, or twenty twenty-one. So I'm only speaking for myself, I'm comfortable with that margin. Mr. Bello. Your feelings, sir.
Feelings?
Yeah. How about that?
Feelings. Okay, I mean, the facts are that we're trying to cover what they have declared is a cost of living increase for all employees. Okay, that covers everybody that sits in here.
Right.
Those raises are not equal. I think that was being made clear.
Okay.
It's an average raise, okay? On top of that, as we said, it's a fee for services contract. And that means that whatever the services are, Jacobs is obligated to fulfill those services regardless of the conditions on the ground. So the conditions on the ground can change throughout the year.
Right.
People go out sick, people resign, people take other opportunities. Things happen in the city that require additional personnel, contingencies come about. There are things that need to be built into the contract that you can't put a label on now because you're talking about future performance. And so what you see here is a cost that they can identify paired with a good faith estimate of what it may cost us to deliver, or cost Jacobs to deliver that service. And so it does come down to a question of how comfortable you are with the margin. And then also putting in place things that measure Jacobs' performance, not as far as what's inside this contract. Because this contract says you're going to pay us this much to fulfill your municipal services. But rather how Jacobs compares to other municipalities, Jacobs under our employ, how that compares to other municipalities and other local governments for delivering services. But it's really going to come down to all intents and purposes, how comfortable you are with the margin, which is based on Jacobs' best faith estimate on what it's going to cost to deliver those services to the city. You have a piece that is identified, you have a piece that is kind of malice, it's just kind of out there. But you have to understand that that's to take care of, that's to smooth out what happens over the course of the year. That's my thoughts.
All right. Feeling, your feelings. Thank you for your feelings.
Auditors don't have feelings.
That's true. I used the wrong word, your, your assessment. There we go, all right. Okay, council, any more questions? All right, council, I'm going to move that we approve the twenty twenty CH two M contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further conversation?
Yes, sir. I didn't want to get that documented in the adjustment, if we could, that shows what the base is and what the, the total is going to be.
And as, and also as a side note, I think going forward, we should move towards pretty much determining what that cushion is going to look like. And so as much as we can, so I do understand that we won't be able to put a fixed number on it. And, but we need to have a percentage that we're willing to operate within without any cost of harm, just a needed, a necessary operating expense. So we know that this is a contract for services and which include cost of living. So there's a lot of things involved in the contract for services. So it's not necessarily the number of people, but it's also the quality of people. So you know, it's, it's like if we're getting a B team from CH two M, and there, that, that B team skill set might only cost us less than maybe fifty percent of what we're paying out now. But if we get into A team, we're going to have to pay for A team. But, and then as, as the world turns, you know, that's why they have cost of living increases because next year, our expenses as individuals may even go up. And we, you know, so we look for those type of opportunities. And so do companies, and so does the city of Stonecrest. So, you know, I, I do think we should have some set amount that we are absolutely, we're not, we're not going to be comfortable with going above that percentage in, in not just contract with CH two M, but with all these type contracts. And maybe that should be moved in, in part to a purchasing policy that we can deal with these issues as well. But for now, I'm, I'm comfortable with, as, as Councilman Turner put it, the one point four percent that is kind of like out there. Narrows down to less, yeah, two hundred fifty thousand, seven thousand dollars.
So understanding, Councilman, is that we determine that rate and not allow Jacobs or any other contract.
Exactly, we would determine that as a city. And that's the way it should be, you know, because we, we have to protect the cities.
I agree with that.
Right, and so we have to be fiscally responsible to our citizens. But at the same time, we still have to be responsible, not, not just with the money, but also with the services that we provide to our citizens as well. So we got to make certain that we're providing the best services for the money that we get. So, you know, so yeah, that's why.
I want to add to that also, Councilman, you make a very good point, you and, and Councilman Turner. As we continue to move forward, Mr. Wright, so that we'll know, you know, throughout the year, particularly when twenty-one is coming up and how we're going to continue to serve at that. Mr. City Auditor can provide us with some milestones as to where we are, what's happening, are we on track? That particular piece. That's why I'm comfortable with what we're doing today because I've seen the, the quality of, of folks that you all have delivered with regards to the tasks that we need to have at hand. But I want all the council to feel, you know, one hundred percent comfortable as to where we are as, as, as both councilmen talked about where we are at milestones. So there won't be, you know, any surprises. Again, you know, all of us have a, a certain different, you know, comfort level with regards to where we are in business. It's comfortable for me, but I want them, I want all, you know, all to be comfortable at that time. You know, just one, one point four is just a number I can, a percentage that I can, can, can live with, if you will, on that side of it. Councilman. Councilwoman.
Sorry, I'm, I'm calculating. Ratchet numbers. What I was trying to identify is our contract currently has a stipulation that each year, the contract total, for lack of better words, will not exceed five percent of the base. So what I was trying to calculate by using their own formula, our, our contract also says if we don't come to an agreement in negotiations, that they'll use this said formula that's built into the contract. And so I was using that formula to see if this four percent increase fell into that formula. So it's basically, if you agree to this number, it just can't be above five million. But that doesn't mean that that number is lower than their, than their Plan B, which is the formula. What I was calculating was the difference between what we would agree to in negotiation versus Plan B. So anyway. I do understand that there is room, that, that there is a, a need for inflation and operational costs, even to provide the same services that you're already providing. What I am not familiar with is that being described without backup. So my, my reservation is that you tell me there's an increase in that cost to provide that service, but to me, it's not a concrete, there's not concrete data to support what that increase, what that is. And so that's just, that's just my reservation. But when I crunch the numbers, they're, they're not the same for sure. So just know that by going with a negotiated amount, it is higher than the Plan B, which is written in their contract. So obviously, I would be more comfortable with the Plan B because it's solid. It's a formula they came up with. It still funds the three percent cost of living increase. And, and there's just backup to support that. The one point four kind of floating percentage is difficult for a numbers person like myself to get behind. That's just my final comment.
I was doing the math too. If you look at the formula that says if we can't agree, then you calculate this. If we went and we took, we accepted the explanation of the three percent increase on the labor component, and then we went and we applied the CPI to the other twenty-five percent, and we calculated on that, then now that unexplained difference is down to one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That's that part that's kind of floating, saying that this is may, this may cost us this much more. So it goes from two hundred forty-one thousand, which is a total difference. And when you put those components in, it comes down to about a hundred and seventeen thousand, which is the, I guess, the margin you want to just put a label on.
All right, we're still in discussion phase for a motion. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all in favor for the twenty twenty contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Contract passes. All right. Twenty twenty Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting Schedule?
Our planning and zoning director, Chris Willer, gave me this sleep Friday after he presented it to the mayor. But they've already approved it with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it's their dates. And I've checked to make sure they're not in conflict with us, so they're, they're good to go.
Oh, you did, you did cross this?
I did cross check them, yes.
All right. Uh, do we, I think we actually need to vote on it. Yeah, we, we need to vote on the calendar. Okay, council, I'll take a motion for the twenty twenty Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting Schedule?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting Schedule.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Uh, we've already done the actual housing authority appointments, we'll go to old business. Two thousand nineteen budget amendment resolution?
Mayor, I think we've, we've made the reflective changes that we discussed earlier, and they're highlighted. And I think we're ready to go, I hope we're ready to go.
I'm going to yield to Councilwoman Kabbal.
Yes, sir, I see the number, we've adjusted that number for the public works section.
Okay.
Refund the squash line, and I see that, that has balanced. In the end, the reflector good.
All right. Also, any further comments?
Now, Mayor, as a, if the motion should be to adopt a budget amendment and the accompanying resolution.
All right, council, I'll take a motion for such for two thousand nineteen?
Mr. Mayor, I have the motion that we adopt the budget amendment, twenty nineteen budget amendment with the accompanying resolution.
All right, properly moved.
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, twenty nineteen budget amendment passes. We're resolution, thank you. We have a need for executive session? All right, I'm going to motion that we move for executive session for real estate and personnel. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There we have it. Councilwoman-elect, would you join us, please? Mr. Wright? Ms. Thibodeau? Mr. Bell?
The motion was to come out of executive session. I made the motion, Councilman George Turner, second.
All right.
Mr. City Attorney? Got any comments? All right, okay. Councilman George, sir?
Just to mention that we are having a complete count census, twenty twenty committee meeting on Thursday at six P M. I realize that at six thirty, there's a Christmas tree lighting, so we will do it here just before that event. You can join us, please do. And on the nineteenth of this month, District Four is having an awards ceremony at Big Miller Grove at six thirty P M.
All right. All right, Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, a question, do we need to vote on not meeting for the twenty? What is that?
Yes. All right, that is correct, that is correct. I'll take a, I'll take a motion to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we have a motion to cancel the meeting on December, the next one, if y'all want to cancel it?
Correct.
December twenty-third is the week of Christmas.
All right, that's what we're looking for.
That is the proper turn, council.
Yes, sir. I'm going to, we add an item to the agenda to consider cancellation of the twenty-third meeting, or the meeting of December twenty-third.
All right, properly moved.
Second.
Second, all right, any, any conversation? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the item is now added for meeting consideration for December twenty-third. All right, council, I'm open for discussion. Or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll for a motion that we counsel, if that's the proper turn, the meeting for December thirty.
Second.
Twenty nineteen.
All right, properly moved and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That meeting is canceled. All right. Councilman Rob Turner?
I'm good.
All right.
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you the next year.
All right. Councilwoman Kabbal? The City Manager?
I'm good, Mayor, and I want to thank everybody for your patience tonight and appreciate your help.
All right, good deal. Madam Clerk? Ms. Debeatty?
Yeah, actually, we have a, a transportation master plan pop-up meeting tomorrow at the Stonecrest Library, beginning at four o'clock until seven o'clock. And encourage everyone to come out and your voices be heard.
All right, well, good deal. All right, if all hearts and minds are clear, I hope you all have a great holiday, if I don't see and talk to some of you. And Councilwoman-elect, Mrs. Tammy Grounds, we will find out exactly when the swearing is, is at that, that point. I think your certification is, is Friday or Monday, and then. I think your certification is, is Friday or Monday, and then, um, Friday, and then from there, we'll contact you ASAP, so we can make the dance happen. Good deal. All right, folks, we've had a great year, and, um, this is, um, fantastic progress for us. And, uh, we're glad to, uh, make things happen the way they do. With that, I'll take an adjournment. All right, so moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There we are, thank you.